Hi, Donald Moore, Mayor of the City of Reedsville, and I hereby call a special meeting of the Reedsville City Council for Tuesday, October 22, 2024, at 3:00 PM in the first floor conference room in Reedsville City Hall, 230 West Morgan Street, Reedsville, for the purpose of a work session on the unified development ordinance with the consultant and staff. We in business.
I like united, that would be fine. Yeah, I like that. Alright, so I'm gonna stand and sit, and sit and stand, because you know, I gotta move around and talk with my hands on a little bit, so. Hi, everybody, I'm Chad with Co-Right. It's a pleasure to see everybody again. We have, I don't know if you recall, back in March of this year, we had another work session, and I asked you guys tons and tons and tons of questions, probably still PTSD from that session. Today, we have more questions for you, but not nearly as many. And so, I'm gonna give you guys a status update of where we are. I'm gonna ask some of these questions, and we'll have some discussion, and then I'll clarify where we're going to be, okay? As always, if you have questions, just stop me. Barbara, if, I'm gonna, I don't know, I guess I'll be able to see you, so that's, so I think we're good. Yeah, okay, fantastic, alright. So, but sing out if you have questions or need more information. Okay, so, we're gonna talk a little bit about what we've gotten accomplished, where we are, go over those ten questions or so. Ten questions, a couple that have a few parts to them, but basically ten questions, and then kind of where we go from here and when are we going there, okay? Alright, so, true form, I always start off my presentations with a discussion about project goals. And these are the six project goals that we've been working with up to this point, obviously making the UDO more user-friendly, focusing on, you know, increasing people's success, focusing on creating an environment for a better economy, more opportunity for jobs, more opportunity for prosperity, okay? Implementing your adopted policy guidance, your comprehensive plan, the technical plans that you guys have adopted, like the Blue Ways, Green Ways plans, et cetera. Broadening housing options, creating more opportunities and a wider range of choice for housing here in Reedsville. We have, as you guys know, a variety of housing crises all across the United States. I think I heard recently that North Carolina is down seven million, seven million homes North Carolina-wide, which is interesting and a lot, so we'll, you know, that's definitely something that we need to be taking up and thinking about, not just Reedsville, but everybody. Obviously, making it easier to develop in downtown, but while we're making it easier, we're also trying to establish and maintain a floor for quality, right? We want good development, we don't want just any development. And then finally, consistency with North Carolina law, court precedent, et cetera, because this is a legal document, and it's necessary and advisable for us to be sure that we're consistent, all the laws and recent jurisprudence that's come through the process, okay? So, these are our six project goals that are guiding light for us as we go forward. And I just wanted to share those with you. I'll mention one other thing that Jason and I have talked about a little bit, and we shared it a little bit with the planning board last night, and it's an important concept, and that is, you know, this unified development ordinance is a major leap forward for Reedsville from a regulatory standpoint, okay? It has a lot of new procedures, there's a lot more clarity, there's a lot more predictability, okay? But this thing is not a silver bullet, you know, we're not gonna put any werewolves down or put any vampires down or anything like that. There, the UDO is engineered and designed to facilitate good development, and assuming you guys adopt this document in the next few months, you're gonna have it as a tool in your toolbox. Should you expect waves of development to come crashing over the bow of Reedsville, and you know, like stampedes of developers coming in to develop here in the city, the answer is probably not. The UDO is one of many things that local governments incorporate and bring to bear on development, but there's a market, there are other factors involved, there's the state building code, there are other challenges that we have to continue to face. Some of the problems, some of the issues that Reedsville has experienced in terms of lack of predictability, standards that don't make a lot of sense, we'll fix those things with this process, but there's still gonna be the market, there's still gonna be the cost of developing older buildings in downtown, there's still gonna be the building code challenges, those things continue to exist. Some of the UDO stuff will address that, some of it won't, and there may be some other things that Reedsville needs to do, you know, in pursuit of your goals for development here. I just wanna be sure that, you know, everybody understands this will help, you know, and one of the best ways that the UDO can help is to simply get out of the way, and we're seeking to do that while at the same time creating some other options. So, this is our original project schedule, in fact, I showed this slide back in August of 23. This really hasn't changed, at least the tasks haven't changed, there's six main tasks, we have some pro bono work that we provide afterwards, just to make sure that things are working as intended. And we're squarely right in this sort of area between four and five, we're finishing up the drafting and moving into adoption, okay? And you're looking at your clock, your calendar, and you're saying, wait a minute, it's October, this calls for adoption in November. I would say we're a month behind, a month and a half behind, which is fairly typical, that's not an exorbitant amount of time. And I'll talk a little bit more about the adoption process, which is a little bit more complicated than it was when we started back in October, or August rather, of 23, the General Assembly made some changes and some clarifications about some of the provisions that we're adopting, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. The bottom line is, it's gonna take two meetings of this body to get your UDO adopted, okay? And we'll talk about some possibilities for timing in a moment, but this is the original schedule, and moved up pretty well, and it's a testament to your staff, your staff and the other departments who have really been pushing and making choices quickly and allowing us to stay on target, which is fantastic. There are ten chapters in the UDO, and so I realize that it's kind of tough to see the color differentials, but chapters or articles one, two, six, seven, eight, and nine are done. They've been through staff, they've been through planning board, they're ready to put out for public consumption, okay? Last night, we went over the land uses article, Article Five, with the planning board, the staff is giving us their comments on that material. My staff and I have been working to wrap up the balance of the articles. Article Three is the configuration article, what the heck is that? That's parking, landscaping, signage, open space, lighting, access, infrastructure, okay? Signage, that kind of soup-to-nuts development standards kind of stuff. Then Article Four, districts, those are your zoning district standards. We're not making, I would call them sweeping changes to your zoning ordinance districts, we are changing some names, and we are making some adjustments to the conditional zoning process, happy to talk about some of those revisions if you guys would like to cover that material, but suffice it to say, this is not wholesale change to your zoning district provisions. Finally, the appendices, that's really for staff and for applicants. Your appendices will have some checklists in there for site plans, Platts, you know, subdivision documents, what you have to have on those documents, as well as the certificates and declarations. When you record a subdivision in North Carolina, there's some boilerplate language that you have to put on the face of the plaque, and we give applicants the verbiage for them to copy and put on their plaque face, that's also in the appendices. So, there may be a couple of other minor things in there to help applicants as they move through, but you guys, I mean, unless you really wanna see that, we don't, I don't know that we need to spend a lot of time talking about that stuff, it's just there to help applicants with the law, okay? So, this is where we are, I would anticipate having all of this material in staff's hands for their initial review by the 25th, Friday this week, alright? Okay. So where does that leave us from here? Staff has three chapters to review, three, the configuration chapter, four, the district chapter, and ten, the appendices that I mentioned earlier. We expect two, three weeks for that, if you guys need more, then great, that's fine, the problem, we're a willing partner to do whatever we need to do to assist with that. The planning board, we decided last night, we had our second review with planning board last night, we decided to have a third meeting. At that third meeting, we'll cover any final questions they've got on Chapter Five, talk about three and four, okay? That meeting, I believe, we penciled it in for November 20th, from 5:00 to 9:00. There is a planning board meeting that night, I think the agenda for them is light that evening, so hopefully we'll be able to get in here, get started, have them do their meeting, and then return to the room and wrap up our work.
There will be a meeting, we'll be part of that.
Okay, great, fantastic, alright, very good. So, we're on target for planning board hearings on the 20th. Shortly thereafter, we will release the UDO adoption draft of the document, okay? And that's basically the version that will promulgate for the public to review through the adoption process. The adoption process is set down for us with the state law, planning board needs to hear and have a formal presentation, they need to provide a recommendation to this body with respect to consistency with the comprehensive plan, consistency with public interest, you know, and the basic kind of consistency and reasonableness provisions in the statutes. Our hope is that that will happen in December this year. From there, you guys, this body will consider the document and their recommendation, and we can talk more about what your desire is for timing and so forth. We're expecting to do that early in 2025. And one other thing that I'll mention to you, that's important, is staff is going to need a little bit of time after the ordinance is adopted before it becomes effective, okay? And that extra time is necessary to make paper copies for you, the planning board, and people who'd like to have paper copies, it's necessary to make sure that all of the applications are up to snuff in terms of their minimum requirements, asking for what's needed for the various procedures that we've got, perhaps training, if that's something that you'd like to pursue. So, just a little bit of time, whether that's 30 days or 60 days, some communities use as much as six months, I don't think you guys need that long, but, you know, there's, there is typically a little bit of a delay between adoption and effective date. Once you've adopted the document, new applications need to come in and comply with the new rules, okay? This lays down the schedule that I just suggested a little bit more, so I'm trying to kind of give you guys a little bit more of an insight into what we're suggesting. I'm guessing, to suggest, planning board consideration on the 18th of December, which is, I guess, the third Wednesday of the month. So, assuming all goes to plan, they would consider that on the 18th of December. On the second Tuesday of January, we would suggest conducting the first hearing of the city council. I mentioned earlier that we have to do two readings. If you're really interested in the reasons why, I'll share that with you, but I'll just suffice it to say, we've reintroduced the notion of criminal penalties for some kinds of ordinance standards. In North Carolina, last year, the law changed, they decriminalized zoning regulations, however, there are aspects in your developed regulations that are not quote-unquote zoning, they're more engineering or environmental. Those provisions, like stormwater, have violation and remedy provisions associated with them. Those, violation of those kinds of standards comes with criminal penalties, misdemeanors, and possibly jail time if you fail to, you know, to comply. When you adopt an ordinance that has criminal penalties in it in North Carolina, you must have two readings, okay? So there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a second reading that needs to happen in February. And frankly, you know, it gives us a little bit more time if you guys have other questions or there's anything that you'd like to cover in the first meeting that you'd like to see, hey, what did you change, or how did we resolve these issues, we've got a second meeting to be able to talk about that, if that's the case, or if that's necessary. And then we will deliver the following week, we'll deliver the adopted version of the document in a variety of formats, and we'll work with staff on that. So, that's our kind of broad sketch of where we're going. We can do it faster if you want to, we can do it slower if you want to, or we can follow this, whatever's comfortable for you guys, okay? Alright, questions on that?
I wanna ask you a question about the last part we were talking about with the criminal penalties.
Yes.
So the county, they operate with sworn law enforcement code officials that work with the county, and we're out implementing these codes and citing violations and those type of things, so would we need to promote, we have a COVID enforcement officer now, but he's not sworn, so therefore he can't make these charges, would we need to look at having a sworn law enforcement officer in that position potentially like the county?
No, no, you would not need to do that. I'm talking primarily about stormwater, sedimentation, erosion control, flood plain, riparian buffer, those standards, and you don't need to be sworn to enforce those. It's a good question. Okay, if you're ready, I'll move into the questions that we have for you, just a little bit of background. So, ten questions, six of them are policy-related, they deal directly with the drafting effort that we're engaged in at this moment. Three are not operation, but operational, in other words, they deal with how the city goes about its development review process. While that's not in the UDO proper, it is very important for this process that we make sure that all of the operations, you know, of Jason's department, Josh's department, everybody's kind of working together. So, we wanna talk about some of that stuff, and then finally, we have another question for you with respect to your will about the zoning map. Remember, every property in your planning jurisdiction has a zoning district designation, that zoning map is part of this UDO. We have structured this document to permit what we call a translation from current zoning districts to new zoning districts without need of a citywide rezoning. However, there are some suggestions and some changes and some things to consider, perhaps you might want to have a citywide zoning, and we'll talk more about that in a moment, okay? So, everybody's ready? Okay. Question number one. So, I don't know if you remember this layout, each question has a quick description, there are pros on the left side, cons on the right side, I'm sorry, you can't see the word cons, but the possible negative or downsides of a proposal are filmed on that side of the screen, the recommendation, which is gonna be, hey, talk to you guys, and then, so what our hope is, is that we'll move through these ten questions, I'm actually gonna sit so I'm not so up here staring at you, and so that I can write down some of your own responses. The hope is that we can have a discussion about this, or that we can get quickly to an answer. As I mentioned a second ago, six of these questions deal directly with the drafting process, which we're engaged in at this minute, so it's very, very timely, and we're hopeful that we can get some kind of resolution to it. So, first question, design standards. Design standards, let me pass this around, these are not yours, but they're examples of kind of what could be for Reedsville, there's a little bit more detail in here than what is probably appropriate for Reedsville, but it's a nice overview of kind of the range of things. Inside this book are mixed-use design standards, commercial design standards, multifamily design standards, okay? I'm gonna start with you, just wanna have a look and pass it along, just pass it around as we go through, and you know, if anything strikes you when you're looking at them, you know, feel free to speak up. So, design standards address building appearance, they are aesthetic controls, that's all they are, okay? They're designed to address how the building looks, not necessarily how it operates. So, we're dealing with things like materials, how is the face of the building modulated, what's the massing of the building? Things like fenestration, the amount of glass, how transparent is the front of the building? Maybe we might address color in addition to materials. Building orientation, which way does it face, does it face a parking lot, does it face a street? What happens when a building's on a corner, which side should it face, or can the entrance be on a corner? Other standards for main entrances, just in general, the next time you're out and about, driving around, take a minute and just look at a non-residential or multifamily building, and look for the clues that the architect is giving you about where the entrance is, because there are clues, subtle clues to everybody about how you get in and how you get out of a building. Those are entrance provisions, which we can incorporate. And then finally, roof form, handful of other kinds of provisions, okay? So, these things are focused on development quality, they're focused on maintaining a minimum threshold of appearance quality, they're designed to send a message about development quality. When a developer or an investor comes to town and sees buildings that look nice, that are well landscaped, that have, you know, good materials and good use of color and those kinds of provisions, sends a message, okay? And the message is, we want quality development here. That's a pro, that's a pro to these kinds of standards, but there are some cons to this, right? For example, they can increase costs, you know, it does cost a little bit more money, depending upon how we structure these standards or where we apply them, new development could perceive some additional costs. Now, most developers pass those costs on, either in the form of rent or in the form of sales price, so developers may tell you, oh my gosh, I can't do this, it's too expensive. Keep in mind that nine times out of ten, those kinds of development-related costs are passed on to the end user, that's an important thing to keep in mind. Also, we have talked a bit about whether or not we should have design standards in downtown, perhaps just downtown, perhaps citywide. Now, flashback, we had this conversation back in March of 2024, we asked this question about design standards, the sense at that time was, put them in, let's look at them, okay? Here is Chapter Three, it's right here, and they're in there, they're in here for you guys to look at, but we have some questions. Question number one, should we apply this to commercial development? Do you want to have commercial design standards? What's commercial? So, commercial is banks, retail, restaurants, personal service kinds of uses, dry cleaners, that sort of business, it's not churches, it's not schools, government buildings, things like that, it's... I'm sorry, am I messing you up?
No. Could you, should, will there be less verbiage over the left?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Could you move it to the left, or are you just putting it like that? She can still see.
She can still see, yes, we just can't see.
Well, we can't see her.
I meant she can't tell.
She can't, but she says.
Are you there, Barbara? Are you with us?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great, we moved you around on the screen, that's why we stopped there.
There's more, I need to. So, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, a pair of questions, one is about commercial, one is about multifamily, and so I think what I'd like to open the questions with is, how does the council feel about having design standards for commercial buildings? Not necessarily industrial, not necessarily institutional, but commercial ones? What's the feel about this?
Well, I got a question on it. So, if I'm following you correctly, as an example, which I know Walmart's right here, right, but if we had an establishment coming here like Walmart or something, instead of, when you're talking about the design, instead of they coming to build just with bricks, bricks, send them bottom building, it's just nothing attractive.
Their usual prototypical Walmart.
Yeah. Is this where this applies?
Yes.
We would like, so I asked if you have a design at the front of it.
That's correct.
Some kind of boat.
Right, right, you're absolutely correct. The design provisions would ask for a Walmart to not have straight, plain, monolithic building walls on sides that face streets, that there be some indulation of the building, or massing, or windows, or false windows, or some kind of visual interest on the sides, that the front of the building be structured so that the primary entrance is a focal point, that there's aspects to the front of the building other than just a giant sign, right? That they incorporate some provisions to screen their mechanical equipment on the roof, and so we're asking for, you know, a slightly higher standard of quality, and the regulations, if you decided to incorporate them, differentiate between the Walmarts of the world, okay, large format retail, which is 70,000 square feet in size or larger, and other kinds of commercial, which are smaller. So, yes.
And one thing that we talked about in the last work session was, you know, how the cost of developing outside of downtown is compared to developing in downtown, the easier it is to build on freeway, drive in a green field, the more likely that someone's gonna do that and not invest in her own building in downtown. So, this is where these design standards can come in, is that, and one thing with the question with just downtown, the reason why we ask that is because right now, so if, let's say, natural disaster, we're seeing them have more and more wiped out, you know, our buildings in downtown, what goes back, what's allowed to go back is what's allowed by our design standards. So, if you don't have any design standards, then it's the wild place, whatever is allowed by building code goes. So, it's kind of, do you want, you know, basements or exterior buildings built back? You know, if they all burn, if they burn down, you know, do you want nice-looking buildings to go back where the current ones are, do you want them built at the same or height? You know, appearance-wise, why do you want to go back? And we hope we never have to use those, but I mean, you know, if there's ever development that is downtown grows, you know, as new things are, do you want the new buildings to look like, you know, the existing ones? So, it's that type of thing, that's where it comes in, this is why this question came up, so downtown is, you know, that'll give you that appearance of those buildings as good-looking buildings, but if you just do it in downtown, that means that your standards just in downtown, but not citywide, technically that's making it harder to develop downtown, but easier to develop other places if you had no development standards. So that's where it comes into the question of citywide, if you incorporate citywide, you can vary, you know, you can have those for downtown and have others elsewhere, so you're not singling out one area, if that makes sense, so that's why I wanted to bring this question to you, to give your feeling on it.
Do you guys remember, I'm sure a lot of you lived here a long time, you guys remember the big fire in downtown Greensboro that happened back in the eighties, Amber Square, I believe it was, and there were numerous buildings that burned, burned down, a couple of blocks in fact, and so the point that you're making, without any kinds of design provisions, were there to be some kind of catastrophe like that in downtown Reedsville, you're gonna get back what you get back, you're not gonna get back development quality that might, that might be lost, so that's a very important point, please.
Is there a way, I don't wanna speak for council, but I was just thinking, is there a way, if they like the way it looks now in terms of... is there a way, if they like the way it looks now in terms of not hanging, we can talk about that too, but I mean, in terms of masonry and structure, is there a way to put something in there that, I don't know how you would do it to make it look as much as, as much like it did, but also make room for advancing of how things are looking?
Sure, sure. That's a whole nother question, right, that you're getting to, which is, how do we make sure that the new buildings that are built in downtown fit in the vernacular? Right? Because, you know, if somebody came here from Dallas, all right, and bought a piece of property right in the middle of Reevesville and said, "I'm gonna build a skyscraper here and it look like Dallas," okay? Smooth glass that's reflective, it would be very much out of character with the downtown. And so, you're asking about, you know, how do we maintain consistency with the built form that's here? Absolutely, those standards address that very issue of window sizes, materials, storefronts on the front, absolutely, positively. And I think in many ways, it's kind of a no-brainer, but it leads to the difficult question, which is, okay, these things do add some cost to development, and we've gotta do some balancing, all right? If we agree that it's necessary to protect character in downtown via design standards, because we don't wanna see Houston or San Antonio going on, you know, on Scale Street, okay, that means we've got standards, okay. Now, it's potentially harder or potentially more expensive to develop in downtown. And that might be what we wanted, it might not be what we want. We might wanna encourage development in the downtown relative to areas outside of downtown. And so, it's not as simple a proposition as, you know, hey, do we wanna have this or not? There's just some things. Please.
If you implement a policy like this, you're putting major restrictions on your individual model type of retail businesses around here. But you also do this, a couple of things that have to take into consideration. We're not actually, this is a tier one county, we wanna promote growth.
Sure.
So, our downtown, in all reality, is gonna be the last place to grow as our population grows. We're not gonna get people coming off the highways, coming in to build here. And if you implement this citywide, you're gonna restrict who wants to come in and build in a community that is as poor as we are right now, because you're talking about passing costs on to tenants and stuff. We already struggle with minor costs to get, to get small businesses downtown Reevesville. So, we're just gonna really shut the door down on all of that, you know, and I'll use like a Walmart for an example, with the facade, and you're, and you are trying to create certain structures, whether it's stucco or window sizes. You could take a building cost just on aesthetics, a loan, say, a $500,000 building, and you change the aesthetics on the exterior portion of that building, you could easily make that cost go from $500,000 to $750,000 to $800,000 and price that person right out of here. I'm totally against implementing anything like this. I don't think that we're there yet financially as a community. And if we wanna stagnate and slow growth down, we implement something like this, and we just, we make it even longer for reasonable growth, in my opinion. It's just, I'll use your business you have on the railroad tracks for an example, okay? I'm sure when you designed that and you came up with that idea, you put what you could afford and you rubbed into the business of it. But if you go by these designs, aesthetics, and you start remodeling on that building, you put it where that front of your building could end up costing you, it could've cost you $50,000 to $75,000 to come up into these standards. And then my question is, would you be where you're at now? You know what I'm saying? So, this is, in my opinion, and obviously with this, I'm totally against it. I think it's bad right now, because we're not financially there. We don't have the population here yet to afford that. And this is something that could always be implemented down the road as reasonable growth. You can afford it.
Is this just mostly new construction?
Yes.
Why, this is just new, right construction?
Or let's say the facade falls off from the existing building, and let's say that the owner is gonna go back and put another facade. Right now, there's no design standards. Correct, they can do the cheap thing and they can put a ten facade by whatever meets code, building code, that is. But if you put design standards in place that require masonry exterior, then you can require them to have a masonry facade put back on the building. But, you know, if you don't have that, then they can put back whatever meets building code.
And if this is adopted with that, let's say, council adopts the masonry. Would this address that concern over there, what we already have, if you had to fix it when this is adopted?
Well, it would say what you have to put back, so that would require a masonry facade.
It wouldn't force him to fix anything, but you'd be governing what he puts back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But even if you speak in large retail, I'll use Starbucks, for example, or Target, for example, these retailers already have specific designs that they do all over the country. So, very few places, when you go into a, there's certain areas in Asheville, and I use that as an example, where they have like living and commercial retail and all these spaces, and they create these small pocket developments where this is applicable at, in my opinion. So, if we had a development like this in a pocket area of Reevesville, I think you could apply something like this. But to every building up and down Freeway Drive, and you spoke about, if we do this, you know, it'll push people here more towards the city versus developing on Freeway Drive, I disagree with that, because I feel like what that's gonna do is push people away from here, because until we're a destination location and until we have a certain amount of population here, people aren't coming downtown. People aren't gonna come down to Freeway and travel and come to downtown. If people are passing 29, 14, or whatever, they'll get off on Freeway Drive, they'll get off on Bond Street, and they're gonna shop. Regardless, you're not gonna force them here. Now, if we have development, motels and certain things like that here, and as these 1,400 houses come on the block, those people, the 1,400 houses is what's gonna create business in a sustainable, full downtown. So, we are putting barriers up, in my opinion, that is going to set us back 10 years in development, people wanting to come. I spoke to many people who develop and have tried to sell them on the idea of investing downtown, purchasing some of these buildings. And they're all interested in these outer line areas where traffic's flowing and in and out. And they say, yes, I would love to develop here, but when the population, you know, calls for that downtown, you know?
But if you look at other cities, though, other cities, if you start visiting, building there downtown, and they are putting in standards and making them more for companies and businesses to come downtown. In fact, in Greensboro, right now, a business that's coming back to Greensboro and redeveloping is stepping down area.
Well, we're not Greensboro, we don't have Greensboro's money. We don't, people don't pay.
Good, if you can start building up the areas downtown.
People don't pay, you know? If you don't have people with the money to come here and invest when it doesn't sustain that right now, that's, I ain't gonna get into it. And that's my opinion, everybody knows where I stand. I think it's gonna set us back in time. And I think maybe this is something you could look at in a couple of years as development goes, and always implement something like this later on down.
So, if I may interject something. One thing that I know we'll be talking about soon on some two-on-twos is you all are aware that Lenny's Lane has done a downtown report. City staff has been meeting with her on that, and that's something we'll be talking about very soon to get some direction on where you want to go with that. But I will say, this topic is gonna come right back up in her report. So, you know, maybe just, I don't want y'all to decide this here, just, I feel like I need to share that, that this topic, you're gonna see come back up about her recommendation for standards as well. I just felt like I needed to disclose that. That is in her report as well.
Also, just wanted to add one thing, that this is the minimum design standard. You could have more restrictions, more less restrictions, too. So...
But we don't have a minimum design to go by, what are we talking about?
Well, that's what it is, talking about status, isn't it? A minimum design standard, what these buildings would be expected to have. So, also, in a sense, you're also protecting the property values that currently exist by the buildings that also will be popping up by. You're essentially saying, you're keeping the integrity and the cohesionness of a specific area, so someone can't just throw up a ten building downtown, or a modular building downtown. It's gonna stick with the cohesionness of that area. So, it's, yes, it will create some barriers, but I'm not saying we need to go all out on restrictions and make it super unattainable to acquire. There are minimum design standards that you can do to protect property values and don't create a significant barrier for a building potential to be built.
And then take it here in downtown.
It's adjustable, it's restricted of course.
I don't disagree, but if you had a design standard and you look at these design standards, and I'll just use downtown, for example, or whatever it may be, like if you're talking brick and mortar, or if you're talking masonry and stucco, and you know, you're talking about metal, but look at what a lot of, I'll use the Chevrolet store as an example, the whole front of that is metal, you know, on that store building. So, metal's not necessarily, you know, gonna be like somebody sticking a piece of corrugated tin up as well. So, are you gonna specify no corrugated tin? But if you wanna use this slick metal that costs about a quarter million dollars to put on the front of that building, which is very nice, you know, where, how are you gonna, how are you going to differentiate between those design standards? And I don't feel like you could just tell somebody they've gotta put brick and mortar up, or they've gotta put stucco and masonry up, you know? And if you wanna give them multiple options in the way that that could conform, then I would agree, I would agree with that. But there are really nice buildings, you look at the Starbucks building, it's stucco, but then it has that flat metal. That's a huge look going on right now in places. So, it's other, six other council members here, but it would have to be a very detailed and broad design standard for me to agree with it, where that we give these people who are building options where that they can financially afford to invest in this community. Because, let's say if I was worth $100 million, and you put a design standard on me, and I can afford to build this building, that's fine. And I say, okay, well, I'm gonna build this building, and I want $10,000 a month rent for it. But the bottom line is, is can anybody here afford $10,000 a month right now to implement that cost back on the small business like what he said? So, when we do these, at this point in time, that's what I'm getting at, we're going to, we're gonna choke down the affordability of small business here in Reevesville, is what I'm getting at.
Do we not already have some design standards in our Main Street program?
Only for the paint grant.
But the Main Street program itself has design standards, because they have to be, if it's in a historical area, it has to meet a lot of those codes.
But that's if they're taking advantage of the grant to do the facade.
But I'm saying that's an example of what we could use, because they're not over-the-top design standards.
Well, even like with the paint grant through Main Street, the only way that, that's really not even enforceable, unfortunately, because it's if you take advantage of the grant, then you have to adhere to that color palette. But if you don't wanna take advantage of the grant, you can paint your building any color you want.
I think, I think in terms of design standards, if you wanna implement some scenarios or designs that are not permissible, and maintaining control in that aspect, where you cut some of that out, you don't put it over the top. Like you say, you're not just gonna go right down here to this particular building, but the front's missing off of it. He frames it up, and he's gonna screw corrugated metal to the front of it, because it's permissible under the building code, you know? I think it's a whole lot easier to choke this down by telling you what you can use versus telling you a few things you can't use.
So, Chad, Chad, we're at 3:46. So, my question to you would be, do you have standards for council to look at and consider what they're asking?
So, the answer to the question is yes, but they're not vetted in with staff. Are they very much akin to what you're talking about? Not necessarily you have to use this color, you have to use this material, but rather, we don't want you to use smooth face block. We don't want you to use corrugated tin. Those kinds of basic provisions are what we would suggest be appropriate. Some basic provisions about heavy material below lighter material. Some basic provisions about if you're gonna have a flat roof, it needs to have a cornice. It needs to have a parapet and a cornice. So, I think it's natural for people to think that we want, by saying design standards, we want everything to be a Victorian building or everything to look like Malibu. And that's, that's not what we're going for here. It's more about some basic timeless kinds of provisions. If you're gonna do a building that's 60 feet wide in downtown, organize it into two modules of storefront that are 30 feet wide. Why do you do that? Because that's how big the storefronts are now, right? So, we're trying to sort of pick up on and focus on the best things that are in downtown and kind of ensure that new development that comes along is complimentary to that. And if the building does burn down or is destroyed, something that's put back is put back properly, instead of something that, you know, it's not proper and that you're gonna have to live with for the next, you know, 100 years.
Something else sincere is not glass. Do you like storefronts? Like, all our buildings have multiple storefronts. If you don't have a certain percentage of glass required, it can be nothing. They don't have to put a storefront, it can just be a door.
So, we've drafted some standards. They're here, the work's already done. It's not like we're trying to get out of the work. We're trying to calibrate provisions.
For me, provided me with those at some point in time.
Well, there's some right there.
Yeah, but you said these don't all apply to us, like businesses. I would want to read what you were offering or suggesting for us, and I think we all should wanna read that and then make a decision of whether or not we want to adopt that. Since you've already done it for us, you know?
Right, so, how about outside of the downtown? What's y'all's sense about the outside of downtown?
Well, that goes back to what was said earlier in reference to a Walmart or a Target. They already have a design that they, that they like, that they go along with. And I would start putting up standards for the outside that don't match that. I'm not gonna bring my Target story here, people may want to pay extra money. I believe we need a minimum standard for downtown, because if we don't, we're gonna start having a lot of the same complaints we get from communities about housing, and about yards, and about everything else. We need to have that minimum standard, so we'll have a beautiful downtown and a safe downtown. Because you're gonna have a facade, just like you have on your house, on some of the buildings downtown. Because it would be cheaper to cover up a building with a facade. So, we've got to do something that's gonna make that downtown.
And I would agree with you, that's why I said I would like to read it. But that was something where I said maybe easier to say, no vinyl facade and no corrugated metal, or maybe not, let's read what he's got, 100%. I don't, I'm not opposed to it, as long as we see what those standards are. We can discuss it and make sure it's applicable in the community.
And I think that's what you were looking for, Chad, was is there a desire for council to even let us? I think Chad was trying to prevent this going any further to where, you know, you didn't get surprised, there's design standards in here. So, it sounds like if there is a consensus for Chad and staff to move forward with looking at their recommendations and sharing those with you, that's one part of the equation. The second part that we're just looking for some direction on, do you want that to apply, I think Chad said, you know, downtown or citywide? You guys tell us what you want, so we know what to put in there to let you review. Some may be just a clear-cut, no, we know not to put that section in there.
I agree with fair in downtown, not nowhere else. And let us see what it says before you even put it in there, you know?
I agree with you, too.
Okay, very good.
If we get some type of handout, you know, or something like that.
I'll forward, then once I get to drive, I'll send that to Summer and then the reporter.
I'll ask a question about multifamily, which is the other side of the question. So, we talked about commercial, remember, the banks and restaurants and Targets and all of that stuff? There's also multifamily. And so, what is y'all's sense about multifamily buildings? Are those something that you wanna control the appearance of? Or are we happy to go forward with, you know, without controls?
Also, go forward without it, because these five units, you could have somebody else. Basically, you know, everybody was against controlling the way that these houses were built on South Park Drive, and those have been considered multifamily because they're all attached. because they're all attached townhomes, you know, in, in sections and that type of stuff.
Right. So let me clarify. When I say multifamily, I mean more than five units. They're, they're not townhouses, because we cannot regulate design on townhouses. Um, but you have the authority, if you choose to use it, to regulate design on multifamily.
Apartments.
Yeah, apartments.
More than four units.
I think that would go.
Five, five or more, then there's no land that can convey it's where the, the unit. It's just, you know, it's just the inside of the, of the, of the unit itself.
My opinion would be none, because we're putting more red tape down on the people that we want to invest. And I think it would go the same way with, with.
Think about your residents too, though.
And the different thing.
Some of the calls you would get.
But think about the Longdale Drive apartments. Nobody's had to implement anything on, on them. And I think they're really nice apartments. But what if we went in there and started trying to control the way that they, they build these apartments? He may say, okay, fine, I wanna build my apartments elsewhere, because you've just increased my cost on multifamily building by one million dollars.
And, and I see that point. I think we're just, as staff and the consultant, we're just looking for guidance, because I know that's a question that comes up from time to time when you get calls from constituents wanting to know about, well, what's, you know, what's that design gonna look like? And I know we've had questions before from council members, is there any way to, um, look at how to put standards on there? And I think that's where we're looking for clarification. Here's you an opportunity, do you, would you like to or not? And Jason, I think, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, no, you're good. One of the, one other thing is recreation space. Requiring, right now, we allow a 1.5 unit bonus for apartment developments that provide, I think it's about ten thousand square feet of recreation space. That, that can include like a gym or either, either outdoor or whatever, where they're providing pool. Um, so what we can require is that, that be provided. So you, you can say, you know, if you're building an apartment development, you have to provide at least, like say, let's say, ten thousand square feet of recreation space, which I'll be okay with something like that. And we're not, we're talking, that's still a standard, but it's not a.
But are you gonna require this on a twenty-five unit? As, as you would a hundred units or two hundred? You know what I mean? Who are you, how, who are you gonna require this on? Because what if a man has a small parcel of property and he can build a set of two-story apartments and he can put twenty-five units in right there, you know what I mean? Well, if you're gonna require that, then you're gonna keep him from building in this small section of property right here. Putting these affordable, back to affordable housing and apartments, you know. Are you gonna start limited, you know, development, in my opinion, on that aspect? Are you gonna rise the cost of rent for where the people who work it can afford?
And again, these are just questions for council. Us as staff, we're just working with the consultant, giving you tools, and you tell us if you want them in your toolbox or not.
Right, right. So I, I mean, I do have another question about open space, uh, which we can jump to. I don't feel, I think what I've heard at this point is we don't want multifamily design standards. Is that?
I say stick to downtown.
I agree.
Yes, okay. So, so multifamily design standards would apply in downtown only. Okay. Excellent.
The what now, what did you say?
Multifamily design standards.
No, I said stick to downtown and commercial retail. I don't think we're talking about.
So I think, maybe clarify, these are two different things.
Correct.
And these are two separate.
Commercial design standards and there's multifamily design standards.
Yes.
And so I was asking about multifamily design standards. Um, you could not have any. You could have some in downtown, or you could have them citywide.
I think what I was saying was none, and we, and we were just going back.
Right, I understand.
I think that's what you were.
But if we don't have any, there ain't a standard on multi-use, then somebody could come in, find some land, say like South Park Drive, and come in and put up center block parks.
Correct.
Yes.
That look just square, center block.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yes.
There is no, there is no design.
There is.
I got a problem with that. So if the house in New York, you would dig a, put that in a standard.
Yeah, I got a problem with that. If somebody comes up here in my neighborhood, buys fifteen acres of land and puts apartments, we don't have standards on it. And then they go in and put up center block parks. And you see the center block squares after it's painted. I have a big problem with that. If they don't have a standard.
We're already having problems, like in that neighborhood.
Yes.
That are against this development that's gonna be, that is gonna be a great design. And we're already having problems with that.
But that has, but that has a design.
Has it, yeah, that's our problem.
But if you run across one, and we don't have any kind of standard, they can pretty much build whatever it looks like.
Yes.
It looks like crap.
Yes.
Typically, those are designs that are all Texas. You don't get that. You got those center block parks.
I understand that, but when we had the South Park Drive, come up to that, that designer, with that guy there, I heard it sit there and say, well, we can build as nice as you can, if you want to, or as cheap as we want to. And I have a problem when somebody says that, and we don't have anything put in place, that somebody will go out here and build a bunch of crap. And I'm, I can't, I can't.
But the law is only gonna allow you to control parks, just like you said, you can't put a design standard on townhouses.
Well, that could be apartments.
Yeah, I'm saying apartments.
You go in there, if I was a designer, I mean, and builder, go in there and build a center block.
Right. That's what I'm saying. You got a center block park on Sherwood Drive. And there are some high-end where people do bill block. They, now, because it cuts a lot of process out. I'll use like Walmarts, for example. They have these split face block, blocks. And then they're dyed different colors. And when you actually put them together, so if you cancel out block altogether, you really could still be canceling out a nice, you're gonna have to specify in terms of those block in the design, maybe, I don't know if you can make it where it comes in and it's approved, but there are a lot of materials out there.
I'd say you have to have some kind of standard.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, if you, I'm just using block, for example, versus a smooth face ACME block versus they have split face block that are in all kinds of colors and they stagger. You just look, there's a lot of buildings that are designed like that now. And it's one step masonry, but still looks nice. And it's been very nice buildings though.
But if we agree we won't standards for that, all of these details will check it out later, right?
Uh, what you'll get from us is detail on, um, who has to comply, what the standards are. We've drafted provisions for building entrances, building facades, materials, uh, roof form, uh, colors, um, and how sites need to be laid out, where the pool goes, where the trash cans go, and all of that stuff has to be screened. So that's what we've put down. Um, happy to share that with you. Typically, those standards are applied citywide. They don't have to be. You could make a choice to apply those in particular zoning districts or in particular geographic areas. Um, you know, I think the point that Jason made earlier, I won't make again, uh, with respect to treating one area differently than another, what that can out, what the outcome of that can be. Uh, but, you know, we, what we've tried to do is take a very light hand, regulate the minimum possible to help kind of ensure some quality development. Uh, but we knew that there was a difference of opinion among the council about whether this was a good idea or whether it was a bad idea. We wanted to have this discussion with you uh, to, to, to help us kind of gauge, are we on target? Are we going too far? Are we not going far enough? Um, I would suggest to you, once multifamily issue, um, let's keep it like we've drafted it, that you look at it and decide, yeah, this is okay, I can live with this, or no, this is too expensive. Um, I would say to you, as far as multifamily goes, um, you know, you're not going to get six-story urban apartments, okay? You're not. You're gonna get three-story suburban apartments here. That's what this market will support. Now, those three-story gardens, garden kind of apartments that are suburban in nature, uh, tend to be very uniform in their appearance, very uniform in their size. They don't age well, um, and they end up being communities that, or developments that, that you're not necessarily proud of. Um, I would encourage you to look at these standards, give these some thought. And if you, after you've had that opportunity, you may decide, nah, not for us. That's okay, you know, but at least we've had this opportunity to explore this.
That's true.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna move on to the next question. Turn it off. Can I advance here?
Yeah.
Turn it off. Lights on. Please. This one's strange. Got it. You got it. Okay. Item two. So the question is limiting by right low-density residential in the mixed-use districts. And so let me give you some background here. Right now, today, you've got a series of commercial zoning districts, okay? Um, and what we have suggested be done is, in the interest of accommodating a wider range of development types, in order to permit more different kinds of development, whether that's mixed use or commercial or residential, we've broadened the array of allowable use types in the zoning districts. We've converted your three standing commercial districts to mixed-use districts, okay? And the point that I wanna make with you, um, is initially, we proposed these to allow a wider range of residential. But after a little bit more thought, the, the question we'd like to ask you is whether or not we should tamp down a little bit to, to fetter the discretion and the ordinance and not allow a very super broad range of residential in these mixed-use areas by right. But to, to have a process that those kinds of things can be established, um, in similar kinds of commercial or mixed-use areas, but not to allow duplex, triplex, quadruplex, single-family detached and townhouse by right in our commercial districts. And that includes neighborhood business, general business, highway business, okay? Um, we would suggest that you continue to permit multifamily by right in those districts, and that you encourage and allow mixed use, where I've got some commercial and some residential, either in the same building or in the same development, okay? Um, and so to the question, should we consider limiting the ability to do these lower-density residential typologies in our mixed-use districts? If we chose to limit that, we would be protecting this commercial land for the quote-unquote highest and best uses, okay? We wouldn't see somebody come along and take down, you know, twenty or thirty acres of commercial or mixed-use zone land and put a, a series of duplexes on it that don't create the same kind of abhorrent benefits that a mixed-use might. Um, this approach also contemplates use of a conditional mixed-use district, um, which allows you guys a little bit more ability to negotiate development quality, development form, et cetera. Um, so in that way, it's a good suggestion. Now, the downside is, you know, we're, we're constraining the housing supply by putting some limits on these kinds of residential use types uh, in those districts that I've specified. It makes it a little harder to do those kinds of residential use types. There's fewer places in the city where that's allowable by right. And so to the question, do you want to assign some limitations to our neighborhood business, general business, and highway business districts that would not permit these lower intensity, lower-density residential forms by right? And rather use the conditional zoning process to accommodate those lower-intensity residential use types in those three districts?
So you're saying they can still apply go through a reason process?
Yes, yes.
For approval?
Yes.
So what are these three particular districts? You always, you said you had them mapped out, you know?
Well, they're your current neighborhood business, your current general business, and your current highway.
I don't think none of us sitting here know what those areas are.
I don't have a zoning map.
I have a zoning map. Um, central business is downtown. Highway business is for Donald and Freeway Drive. General business is mostly where you transition out of, out of central business, you go south. Um, neighborhood business, we have a fair amount of neighborhood business overall, Horn Street. Several of those convenience stores over there are neighborhood business. Uh, we have some highway business going down here. So we have some neighborhood business down there. It, it's based off intensity. So like neighborhood business is just what it sounds like. But that will become the low-intensity mixed-use district. So it's smaller scale, neighborhood scale, versus like medium mix or general business. And now is your, your vanilla, your standard commercial district. Highway business, which is your highway commercial, like bulk, bulk item sales and that, that thing.
Right.
That, that's your, your highway usage, your most intense commercial uses. So that, that's kind of the general layout of what these are and where they are. And, and the reason for this is because we want more housing, but it really is probably not the best idea to put low-density residential by right in all the commercial districts, because like Chad said, you're opening the door to lower-cost investments like low-density residential, it costs less money to do. It's better to put high-density into those commercial districts and mixed-use areas for investment, areas for housing.
I, I agree with that, as long as there's an opportunity for potential rezoning, because you could have this area where you put that in.
And it could work.
And, and it could work, and it would never work for a commercial building or whatever, a storefront. So you gotta be able to go back and allow a developer, if this fits in that particular area, so that you can develop it out.
Yeah, so we will have a conditional mixed district where single-family, duplex, triplex, quadruplex will all be allowed if they go through quadplex will all be allowed if they go through the conditional zoning process. So that's why I like it to be established as through the conditional zoning process.
Like come in here and apply and just get certain planning and move for it?
There is a process for that.
We do that on about everything right now anyway, so I'd be fine with that.
And Mayor and Council, if I may, kind of the purpose of today's meeting, you, Chad, is a writer who hired to write a book. He has written the book, he's looking for other chapters we may want to add to his book, so I don't want you to feel like, once he gets that book, you're going to have all that information to review it before it's published, before you vote it. This is more just trying to gather what chapters you want him to include in this book. So just please keep that in mind, that this is not, by any means, if you go back to his first couple of slides, this is not the final draft, this is just an information session so we can take that and let you see a published product before you start voting on it.
Oh, I understand, but the chapters can be so broad in what he's adding.
I agree, I just wanted to clarify.
He could have had some handouts because he says, "I already got this ready."
And that's, I wanted to clarify.
They could have been presented to us, and we could look at these particular examples, eliminated a lot of questions, and moved on, "Yes, we're interested in this, no, we're not interested in that," you know what I mean? Especially since it's actually already prepared.
Right, but I think we as staff wanted some direction. If you want, there may be some, some council members feel adamantly against or adamantly for, so this is us trying to solicit that feedback.
Yeah, but the direction is so broad, what I'm saying, and so just like going back and forth on the other topics, had we had these handouts, we would understand.
We don't have the handouts, is what I'm trying to tell you.
He said he did, yeah.
He does, as the author, I, us as staff, we don't have that either. We are trying to get, this is a council decision, we are trying to see what council wants from our consultant. I've not saw what he's got either, neither has Jason.
That's correct.
So I have nothing to give you.
It can be seen the opposite way, if we go all the way, we draft all this up and we get it to you, we want to get your input before we provide it to you, so we know what you want. We don't want to draft something and try to say, "Hey, you know, we want to work with you and, you know, and get your opinions," and then come back with something that is what you're looking for.
And we want our mixed-use district to be lovely, big focus, right?
We'll get to that in a second. That's something that, that's, yeah.
I'm generally seeing nods about this, given that we've got a conditional zoning option, this isn't a, you know, a super big concern. All right. Next up is non-conforming site features, okay? So, you know, the UDO, your current development ordinance is an older ordinance, okay? It's been around for a while, and things have changed over time. Rules about parking, ideas about parking, kinds of landscaping, our knowledge about lighting and signage, and all sorts of things that has evolved from when your code was written. We've got new provisions in here that contemplate some changes, parking, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. Now, when those provisions get adopted, okay, you have sites in town that are already built, okay? The parking places are already there, the shrubs and trees are already there, et cetera. Now, the new UDO isn't going to affect those, their grandfather, they're safe, there's nothing that's going to happen to them. However, as a policy matter, one of the things that the city needs to think about is, what happens when there's changes on these existing sites, okay? I own a gas station, I want to turn it into a microbrewery. What are the rules that the town is going to apply to me? Because the rules for a gas station are different than the rules that we apply to a microbrewery, and necessarily so. Now, what we would suggest is that this UDO be structured not to require out-and-out compliance for every kind of change in use, or every kind of redevelopment, or every kind of addition, but rather that we take a common sense approach to when we apply the compliance requirements, okay? So that if I have that gas station, and I want to have a microbrewery, and I need to have some outdoor seating to make my microbrewery work, we don't come back to that applicant and say, "Well applicant, that sounds great, but your lighting doesn't work, you don't have enough parking, you're missing landscaping, you don't have the open space requirements, your sidewalk you need to put in, it's going to cost you $80,000 to put in that seating for your microbrewery." What we would suggest instead is, if the use changes, or if you're making an addition to the building, or construction activity that exceeds 75% of the assessed value, then you come into compliance with the regulations in place at the time that you make that application. If you're doing any less than that, okay, you're not changing the use, the use type is staying the same, or the use is, you know, doing some kind of addition, but it's less than 75% of the assessed value, then we not require any additional compliance metrics to be met, okay? Now, as an applicant, if you choose, you know, you want to put in more landscaping, or you want to put in more parking, great, but we're not making you unless it's a significant investment, 75% of assessed value or more, or there's a change in the use type, okay? That would be what we would suggest you guys consider.
So all change in use type would trigger this, it wouldn't be if it's a change in use, if you exceed 75%, say renovation?
It's, as it's being contemplated right now at the moment, which is why we're asking the question, any change in use would trigger this compliance requirement.
And the reason, so think about this, so think about, you've got an old building, been there for a long time, got a lot of them. Let's say there was a gravel lot there at some point, most of it's grown up, washed away, someone comes in, they want to change the use, let's say it was, I don't know, a storage building, warehouse, and they want to convert it to a restaurant, or a retail store, and they come in, they change the use. It's kind of funny if a, you know, a retailer or a restaurant, you know, has like just kind of the dirt field, and so this, what this change of use will trigger is that they would have to come up to compliance with their site features, parking, lighting, fencing, what have you. And the long-term goal would be, as these uses change, we increase, you know, the appearance of the quality of our building, we're trying to get things better from what they are right now, and so if you don't, if you don't do that with a change of use, if you just say, "Walk in, and you change the use," nothing will get better, it will stay the same as it is, and it will, you know, unless someone just wants to, which, you know, it's like, if you don't require it, you can't guarantee that.
I don't disagree with this, but I don't know if there's a one-size-fits-all for this. I would just use an example, like Tri-State Steel Retail Park Lot. Let's say they moved out of there, and somebody wanted to put, you have this industrial-looking type building, somebody wants to put a restaurant in there, or a brewery in there as well. You change that now from this retail store to this restaurant, so now you're going to implement, where that's already a nice building, a nice parking lot, if that's the case, you're going to make him have to do a lot of additional work to this building, correct?
Not necessarily. Well, it would have to at least.
It depends on how out of compliance it is.
That's what I'm saying, so when this UDO is done, like there's a gravel parking lot out there right now, is this going to make him have to spend, that person have to spend $100,000 and pave that parking lot, you know what I mean? So that's, I think this could be good, but I think that it's not a one-size-fits-all. So how do you apply that common sense, like you said, per individual in this scenario? I don't think you can just do it.
So you don't, and here's why. Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution is the due process clause, and it says you have to treat everybody the same, and so when you start not treating people the same, then you open yourself up to claims that you are favoring somebody or putting somebody else at a disadvantage. And so wherever we can with the regulations, to the extent that we can, we should treat everybody fairly. So the standard would say, if your parking lot is gravel, and you're changing use, we want you to pave the parking lot, and we apply, we ask you to do it, and we ask you to do it, and we ask you to do it, because we treat everybody the same. Now, you might have a really big lot, and you might have a really small lot, it's going to cost you a lot more than it's going to cost you, but the city can't control that. Can we write standards that, you know, adjudicate between those situations? You bet we can, but there's one more thing to think about, and that's complexity, okay? With every different caveat, and every different kind of one-off, or what about, that we incorporate into this, the level of complexity grows, and grows, and grows. And so if somebody comes in and says, "Well, Jason, what do I have to do to redevelop my property?" And you're like, "Well, let me get back to it in a month or so, I've got to figure out all of the different iterations, and how your development fits within all of these different things, and oh, by the way, you know, we need to just have a meeting anyway, we'll tell you what we want you to do."
But I would caution Council too, to really give this some thought, because we gave a restaurant example, give the flip side, let's say it was a vacant building that used to be a restaurant or a bar, and now someone's wanting to go in there and use it as a storage facility, that will be no public prop, that will not be open to the public, so are you going to make them pave this lot? So it can have a flip side too.
Right, tell me, when you say, for an example, you said it's a building that's not open to the public? So if it's a building that's not open to the public, it's their private property, they don't have any control over.
But it would be a change of use.
Change of use.
But I want you to ask, answer this question to me in a way that I understand. If you have, if, so let's say, I have a building, for an example, and it's my personal private building, I'm using it all for my own personal consumption.
Sure.
You cannot implement these rules only on this private property right now, can you?
So.
Not until you make that a public, then.
No, that has no impact at all. If you've got development in Reedsville's planning jurisdiction, and Reedsville says, "You've got to have this many parking spaces, and the parking has to be paved," or "You've got to have this many shrubs," you have to put that in, whether the building's open to the public or not. And I mean, that's, that's how the development regulation operates. Everybody, again, is treated the same, whether or not somebody goes in or not. I think the point that you're trying to make is.
It's the change of use.
Do you need parking if nobody goes into the building? Well, that's more of a question about parking standard than it is a question about whether the parking should be.
But if the change of use triggers it, just remember.
That's right.
There's two sides to that point.
Correct.
No, and, yes, I agree with that, that's why I use that Tri-State Steel, but then you have, you could have a building that looks much worse, and there's a benefit to that, you know, to bring that up, data up, but you could have someone who picks a particular building out like that, but then, if they go, "Come and buy this building, it's pretty much ready, I can invest X amount of dollars, it allows me to have this business up," but then we boil night of water because of the change of use.
So do we, so do we not want to change your use for, there's kind of two options, we just need to know which way, you know, what y'all feel about it.
We can strike the change in use stipulation, and just tie this back to.
I guess, for me, I'd want to read what the standards are, you know, to really know, you know, I'm not opposed to reading it and thinking about it, you know, but in terms of these broad ranges right here, I would say no, but.
Okay. Okay. This is a fairly typical standard, it's in chapter six, which is drafted.
It's also in our current ordinance.
Right.
The same thing we already had?
Yes.
Okay, I was under the impression that you guys don't require.
We don't require, or.
Well, we don't require, hey, you know, we do this for a change of use.
But we also don't require dumpster screening. I mean, there are some things in here that I think everyone should really consider, do you want an eight-yard dumpster in plain visible sight to a right wing? I think that looks hideous, and that's been in many cities for a long time. Here we don't, just because the city does it, at our facilities, like at the penthouse, that was not a requirement, that was something we decided.
City electric was required on freeway drive, and they remodeled it, that was required.
They were required, yeah, the city.
Prior to that, when, when Advance Auto Parts were going to move in there, yes, they were required to put dumpsters. It's in the building, there used to be fast and all beside, beside the Hardee's right there. They were required, all those, Advance Auto Parts didn't move in there, but they were required to do that, so I always thought that, that like dumpster screening was, but that's what I'm saying, certain things I think we just would need to read. I'm good with dumpster, I thought that was something I already do, because I know the owner of that, and I remember when he was required to put a particular pad and put screening up in the, in the review process when they remodeled that building, and then COVID hit, Advance Auto Parts didn't move in, it's set empty, now we got a city electric supply asset there.
So right now, we, to be clear, we do not have standards for screening dumpsters. The only screen requirements we have in the ordinance is for parking. We have some landscaping requirements for new park, for parking lots, that there is no screening for dumpster requirement. However, we have included some in the, the new UDO, so.
And I know sometimes there was businesses that wanted to come down, have to refill, but they couldn't, we, nobody could accommodate them for trash, because we didn't have, you know, we had some restaurants that wanted to come down, they were going to have to walk a block to.
Right.
That's more of a zero-lot-on situation than business.
Yeah, so I don't, but when we wanted.
When you physically have property outside your building, then where does the dumpster go?
Yeah, and we've got, we want businesses to come, but that's kind of a hindrance.
No, I agree with dumpster screening, you know, that's why I said, let us read this and see what's in it, how to put it.
But in the scenario, let's say there's a scenario, so if there's a change of use, do you all believe that there's, that the site feature, the landscaping department should come up to those departments? Just in that scenario? I know, we can get to here and let you read it, do y'all agree with that scenario?
Do you agree with the concept?
Concept?
What would be the difference, what if it's existing park?
So you've got existing parking, and let's just say for the sake of argument that you don't have enough parking spaces, all right? So you were a gas station, now you're a restaurant, okay? So when you're a restaurant, you've got more parking spaces you have to provide. So this standard would say, you're going from a gas station to a restaurant, we want you to put in the parking spaces that you need to have, okay? Or if you don't have a dumpster, and now you do, we want you to screen it. Or if you have a dumpster and it's not screened, we want you to screen it. Or if there's landscaping that's required between, you know, the edge of your property and some adjacent property, and it's not there, we want you to put it in.
But reverse that real quick, what if it was, you went from a restaurant, there was a change of use, at one time it was a restaurant, it was existing parking.
Right.
It's now overgrown, you go from a restaurant, but a change of use has now been triggered because the next person who bought it wants to use it for storage.
Right.
So how does that?
So if the park, so if it goes in reverse, and the minimum requirement declines, if you've got a situation that exists on the site that meets or exceeds the standards, then you don't have to do anything.
Okay, that was clear.
Depending on the influence of the parking, what?
Correct. I mean, you know, if, if the condition meets or exceeds the current standard, right? Then you don't have to change that feature. If, in the case of the storage sort of scenario, let's say it was a gravel parking lot, let's say that the UDO required parking areas to be paved, okay? Storage is going to have a minimum number of parking spaces that it has to, has to provide, if that, if you decide to include it in your ordinance, okay? Those parking spaces need to be paved. Do you have to pave the whole parking lot? No, you only need to pave the minimum spaces that you're required to have.
But what triggers the minimum spaces required to have if it's a building not open to the public?
Because there's a, there's a parking table that says, if you're a warehouse, you've got to have X number of parking spaces for every thousand.
There's no distinction between open to the public or not, it's a warehouse.
But this would make it where it would have to be paved?
So, what makes it so that it would have to be paved is, we've got a parking standard for this use, the parking provisions require parking spaces to be paved.
So do we have parking standards, I guess is my question?
We have parking standards currently right now, we don't have provisions requiring that they be paved at current time.
What is that, with pin number use, right?
The number of spaces? Yes. The number of spaces, but material-wise, right now we don't. We're proposing adding those to bring us more into the 21st century.
Right, it may well be that you don't want to have a paved parking required.
Yeah, we don't have to.
That might be the provision that, that you're like, "Hmm, I don't know that I like that."
Not do this.
Not having, you know, a minimum parking standard for a warehouse, or these sets of standards which would say, if you make a change, we want you to come up to compliance.
That was my question.
Okay. But I don't know if we've gotten any closer to a feeling or a sense about these, this non-conforming stuff.
Well, we did, just look at it and read it, we don't have to adopt it, correct?
Here's, okay. Open space set aside. What we're suggesting is, open space set aside be required for residential, non-residential, and mixed-use, okay? Open space set aside could be passive open space, in other words, required landscaping area, land area that's just left alone. It could also be active, it could be fields, courts, it could be gathering spaces, like outdoor dining, or plazas, or public art, so it could be any one of those features. What we would suggest that the city consider is, a requirement for most forms of development to provide open space, in a varying amount of percentage, okay? And that's percentage of the development site. Residential development would be asked to provide 10% of the lot area, the development area, as open space, okay? Depending on what kind of residential it is, some of that open space would need to be active. If you're doing a multifamily building, then 50% of your required open space, 50% of the 10% you have to provide, has to be active, which could be courts, or ballfields, or swimming pools, or, you know, a clubhouse, or whatever. If you're doing mixed-use, that figure is not 10%, it's 7%, so it's slightly lower in recognition of the non-residential. Then there's 5% for other kinds of non-residential. Including, potentially, if you want to do it, industrial development, maybe you do, maybe you don't, you don't have to do it. The question on the table is, do you want to have a private common open space generally? And if so, are you okay with having these different flavors of this? What this allows you to do is meet some of your community's recreation and environmental protection needs without having to buy the land, okay? So that's what this gives you. If you chose to include this. There is also a fee-in lieu option, which works like this, let's say for the sake of argument that you don't want to provide the open space on your property, maybe it's a small site, maybe you want to develop that, or you want to just give the city money instead. The city would take that, that fee-in lieu, and then use that to purchase open space in the vicinity where that was possible. That, that open space could take the form of farmland, or it could just take the form of open space, it doesn't have to necessarily be a park. So this creates open space, at no cost to the city, it increases development quality, this idea of open space. On the downside, there's cost, you know, because I, here's land that I'm not developing. Now, a lot of people set aside the portions of their site that are not buildable anyway as open space, it's very common, it's a swamp, it's a wetland, it's a stream buffer, it's a whatever, I can't put anything there anyway, so I'm just going to set it aside as open space. Great, sounds good, as long as the open space standards don't require that that land, that open space that you provide, be active recreation area or gathering recreation area, because we can't do recreation or gather in a swamp. So in those instances, that marginal land that's not buildable doesn't qualify, you've got to set aside land that's usable, right, for things like multifamily, for things like mixed-use, and perhaps for things in downtown, okay? So that's the kernel of the approach, how do you guys feel about this concept?
I like it.
I like it.
Okay. All right, good.
But just let me say, most of the ones that we have hooked at for development, they already have that excluded.
Right, it's fairly typical. Whether or not you guys are getting 5% out of non-residential, I'm not sure, but this kind of. Whether or not you guys are getting 5% out of non-residential, I'm not sure, but thi- this kind of standard is not.
We typically do it with residential, you're right, we typically do it with, the new thing will mainly do with commercial.
Right.
When the commercial development happens, that opens space as well. They can request a fee and loo, I don't think you want too much of that, that's where they could, they could request a fee and loo if they want to provide and then they can pay the fee for not having any open space, so.
And then the city uses that money to provide that, you have to use that money for open space.
Oh, and commercial, like, if you give us an example of what they can do for that 5%?
Sure, it's mostly passive. Most non-residential open space set aside is passive, except downtown where it's gathering. And so what's gathering? Gathering is upper seating, could even be on the sidewalk. It's a plaza, it's a public art feature, it's an atrium that's open to the public. It's a roof garden, it's a roof deck. There's a variety of different kinds of gathering open space features that you could integrate into the building, right? It doesn't have to be extra land, it just needs to be space for people to use. If you don't wanna do that, then you set aside a portion of your lot as passive open space.
What is the fee and loo of, what's that dollar value?
So that is based on the assessed value of the land. And so there's a percentage that you have to set aside. We know the assessed value from the county property appraiser tax card. And so whatever that total value is, you apply the minimum percentage set aside that you need to provide, uh, and that's the, that's the dollar amount.
Where, where does that percentage come from? Is that already determined in this?
Yeah, it's in the standard, I mean, it has 10% and 7%.
So it would be 5%, so if you had a million dollar piece, probably be 5%.
Right, correct, correct.
Of that that you would have to pay on the commercial piece.
Right, now, one more thing to keep in mind. You also get credit towards this for your landscaping. So you're gonna subtract whatever land area that's associated with your required landscaping out of that calculation, okay? So that we don't, we're not gonna charge you 5% and make you put landscaping in. You put the landscaping in, if there's any open space that you still need to provide after we've counted your landscaping, then that's what you paid the fee and loo on, does that make sense?
So what if you had a warehouse, for example, mode? And it's just for storage only, warehouse and where they use it, like a distribution type center? And there is no land available for that and it's all a parking lot? I'll use the old reason grocery store, bring me that as an example. How does that work with that?
Right, so that that site, um, that hypothetical site might do a, uh, a fee and loo. That hypothetical site might have stormwater associated with it, depending on how big it is. Uh, if that stormwater control measure is configured as a site amenity, then that would be credited towards your open space.
So you can count stormwater as a site?
If it's amenity. But if it's a, if it's a pit of rip wrapped by a fence, that's not open space.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, that's a utility, so, but if it doesn't have a fence and there's a, you know, a means to be able to get to the edge of the water or to interact with the site and there's plantings, yeah, you would, it would be an amenity, that's correct.
I see, yeah, one thing, I was just gonna say, again, this is strictly for new development. There's a limited amount of open space, once it's gone, it's gonna be the calm. And if y'all are interested also in expanding the greenness, then this is a way to potentially help out that business.
Right, that is true.
And if it's an industrial site and it would be passive, that's not, that doesn't necessarily include the public, right? It'd just be your employees?
That's right, absolutely, that's the thing about private common open space, it's private. Now, the owner can choose to open it up to the public and we would want that for a gathering space, but for a passive, private, open space thing, that you can exclude if you want, that's fine.
Another way to look at this too is, this is kind of, something like this is what's gonna keep it from becoming like a concrete jungle. I mean, building up and being a big city, it all comes, have a piece, somewhat of a small town, little venture, at least to myself.
A lot of your big box, they utilize this to make an amenity area for the employees, like the outdoor right here.
Right.
Maybe a corn mow area or something, that affects it. Kind of also attracts employees to that business as well, so.
And it would attract businesses to come to your town.
Sure. These, these standards are very common, very, very typical. And, uh, you know, they're fairly flexible, they really, really are. Um, if you felt like, in fact, it wouldn't surprise me in five years or 10 years, you guys come back and say, I wanna up the percentages a little bit. That, that wouldn't surprise me, um, I've, I've seen southern towns go to 20. Anyway, okay, I think we've gotten, we're good on this, okay? It's just a comment about greenways. So your Reevesville, Blueway and Greenway plan talks about establishing greenways. They're linear parks, um, they're often required as part of vacant land development as long as the the land, you know, the location of the greenway is flagged on a map, right? If you're developing land and that land is shown on the greenway map as providing a greenway, guess what? You're gonna be asked to provide the greenway, okay? And so, um, we're asking if you guys are supportive of that. This is the policy guidance that you've adopted. What, how this would look in, in reality is if you've got property that's designated on adopted policy guidance as having a greenway, it's going to be the expectation that you put that greenway in or that you provide a fee and loo for the city to use that money either to put it in themselves or put it in elsewhere. And there's a little bit of room for discussion about whether or not we want the land to be dedicated to the city or just be in an access improvement that's in favor of the city, so-called reserved for the city. We don't need to get to that level of detail now, we're just hoping to find out y'all's level of of comfort with this notion. Um, that if you've got a designated greenway on your property, it's vacant and you're developing, you're gonna, we're gonna ask you to put it in. And that's, that's whether it connects or not, you know, this is, we often have these issues with sidewalks and people are like, well, why am I putting a sidewalk in? It starts and stops and it doesn't do anything. Same thing with the greenways. You know, when the greenways are built, they start and stop from nowhere and over time, you know, you connect and they grow. And that's how it works. And if everybody said, well, that just starts and stops nowhere, guess what doesn't happen? A greenway, so, um, support for this, how do you guys feel about this?
I like it.
Yeah.
I like it.
Okay. All right, great. So right now today, um, there's a, there's an unfortunate, unfortunate choice of words in your regulation. And that is that the way that your regulation reads, up to one junked vehicle is allowed, um, you know, per residential lot here in the city. And so we talked a lot about this with the, with the planning board last night. And there's a lot of different feelings and concerns about this issue. I think by the time we got to the end of the discussion, we'd sort of zeroed in on, well, it's maybe okay for people to have an inoperable vehicle, which is the term to use, not junked. Junk as a legal term that comes with it, we should be using the word inoperable. Some folks have inoperable vehicles, those should be allowed, but maybe the current requirements that we have on the books about how the visibility of those inoperable vehicles is addressed, or not addressed, as the case may be, that's what needs to be dealt with. That we should consider possibly some additional screening requirements or placement requirements either for any inoperable vehicle or for lots that have more than one inoperable vehicle. Let's say for, if you have the one, you know, you put your cover on it and you're good to go. If you want more than one, well, that's okay, but anything beyond one has to be to the side or the rear or screened or in a building or what have you.
Can we talk a little bit more on this, maybe adjacent question? Cause I know that this department gets a lot of calls about this. There is a difference in it being inoperable and operable. Will you maybe talk about some of the standards we look at? Cause sometimes it may appear not to to crank, but when we go out there, it does, so that kind of, you want, cause I know you get a lot of calls about that.
Yeah, it's all four tires being flat, um, the vehicle has to operate if you know to crank it and stop it. That's mostly it, and then it becomes a nuisance vehicle if you, if it has grass growing through it around it, that type of thing. That's when it's a new level of nuisance vehicle.
The county requires it to have a current active registration law.
I think.
So we do, so if it's in the street, we do require that they have a tag on it. Uh, if it's on private property, it doesn't have to have a tag. But this gets into more of the, the operation, is it a junk, is it a inoperable vehicle or is it not? And right now, we allow one inoperable vehicle in the rear yard under, under an approved cover, like a car cover. Which Chad, when he says screening, he's talking more about like, like I was up in Burlington this afternoon and they required it to be in a building, like in an enclosed structure, not just a car cover. That's what he tells me, if you know, if you want to require more screening requirements or are you, are you okay with just the car cover? But definitely changing inoperable is.
Right, that's, I think, a low hanging fruit for sure. And then the question is, do we wanna go farther or are we happy with what we got?
That's the question.
Last night, this discussion too, when I was.
Yeah, it sure did, we had a lot to talk about.
I do want to know, what is your recommendation?
My sense is allow people to have one inoperable vehicle as long as it's on a paved or an improved surface. Don't necessarily require that to be the side or the rear. If you want more than one, then anyone past that one that you're allowed, I can't see it from the street.
The problem with that is, you know, a lot of people who have four or five junk cars in their backyard and it devalues the neighborhood, the neighborhood property.
Couldn't agree more.
It's a, it's a difficult situation here because I would use this as the increase in water rates and affordability. And some people may have a car that sits inoperable for the whole entire year and they're waiting on a tax repair to make those repairs, you know, uh, could be a husband and a wife and maybe borrowing a car, both cars have broken down, they gotta get one this year and prepare the other one and hope the other one don't break down between now and then, so.
Well, we have other things too, not only cars, we have tractors. We have all kinds of stuff that are inoperable that are in the backyard and they've been there for a long, long time.
Or even buses.
Right, yeah.
Boats, recreational equipment, all of the, all of the above.
Is there a way to enable, like, even if you're, so you're saying we will regulate these, like, so say if they have an inoperable, inoperable car and grass is growing up already, then they're not allowed that one car, right?
Not to do this vehicle, cause that's not an inoperable vehicle and what that's a junk vehicle, right, a nuisance vehicle.
But they gotta clean that up, is my question.
Sometimes it takes several visits, right?
So code enforcement, I mean, of course, we're not, you know, we work with people, we wanna, you know, we don't wanna be viewed as, you know, terrible people that were just trying to force things on you, like wanna work with the public. You know, they, they, they do what they need to, try to work with people and try to handle things peacefully. Our goal to reach compliance, cause we're not trying to do enforcement, we're trying to reach compliance, but that's what we want.
What about the, the vehicle on Rickerton Drive that evidently they're trying to get it operable, but it's been unlocked for months?
I'll check on that. I'll check on that.
I agree with his opinion, but it should be.
On an improved surface, you get one, freebie, as long as it's on an improved surface, you need more than one, it's gotta be screened.
What's our definition of, of nuisance vehicle, junk?
Joe, Joe.
Not that you can jump.
Yeah.
We should have the, so you'll take that ass, that's gonna be an awful.
An inoperable vehicle, which is the one that doesn't work. And a nuisance vehicle would be one with grass growing through it and creating a breeding ground for this.
No information, something like that.
Yeah, it is. Creating a breeding ground for this for rats and snakes and whatever, the general statute says on it.
Or trees growing in that bit.
Exactly. If it's obvious that the thing has not moved in, you know, a year, and I, I mean, I, you know, there's some subtlety to this, but there's generally, it's often fairly kind of dry.
But if somebody's got a project car, they'll put a cover on it, they may push it in and out, work on it, you know?
And that should be just fine, there shouldn't be any problem with that. It's the, I've got six of them and they're not screened, that's what we're trying to deal with.
That becomes an inoperable yard.
Sad situation with that, the sad situation with that though is when we do the clean tweaks. There are neighborhoods where we've done a clean tweak, there've been five or six cars, cars have been removed. Two, three months later, they're right back, the same cars that were removed.
And we do tow them, so that's all we get right now, so whenever there's a, they have too many, we don't do, we don't do the screening, we just tow them.
Right, right, sure, that makes good sense.
Chad, you said improved surface?
Yes, paved.
So if somebody pulls their vehicle around back in their yard, they don't pave it?
Needs to be an improved surface.
But wouldn't you want that in an operable vehicle, like he's saying in the backyard, not, so we have, say we have street parking and then if they were parked, it's an operable vehicle, I'm more for take this unoperable vehicle and cover it up behind your home, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Right, as, as long as, you know, some lots, if, if the car's in the backyard, it's easier to see, right? I mean, it's, it's not always if it's in the backyard, they can't see it. It, there's has to be this sort of test about visibility from the street. That doesn't deal with the other question that you brought up at the outset, which is, what if my backyard backs up to my neighbors, right? I can't see it from the street, but my neighbors can see it, which is why most of these regulations are structured to say, screen it. It's gotta be screened, we can't, we don't care if it can see from the street or not, if it's more than one, screen it.
You could offer a choice, you could say improved surface or an enclosed building.
But you don't have to allow more.
So you could, you could.
No, you don't, you don't have to allow one.
No.
You, you just choose to, you don't have to.
That's just, yeah, it's been on the park for a long time.
So how, how do we define vehicle?
I liked what you, I liked where you were going with tractors and I think we'll just, we'll, we'll write that so that it's broad.
RVs can't.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any tractor, any motorized.
Who's worried on that?
So you're still doing motorized.
Right, they're so nervous.
Right, yeah, we, we got, okay. We've got a few more minutes. Uh, okay, that's it for the drafting questions, we've got some operational questions for you guys. Uh, and you should move fairly quickly, then we'll see. The first is, um, you know, we're, we're formalizing your technical review committee. Technical review committee is staff, at this point, your technical review committee's in the room. Yes, there they are. And they've got responsibility for reviewing site plans and other kinds of permits under the U D O. We are trying to formalize that body and make them a more formal part of the process for two reasons. One, we're legitimizing them and two, we're making the process more predictable, okay? So that I know what to expect, all right? As part of that, we think that the T R C should adopt a meeting schedule and have regular meetings, okay? So we're gonna meet once a month, or we're gonna meet twice a month, or we're gonna meet a thousand times a month, whatever it is. But there's a regular schedule. Coupled with a regular schedule, application submittal date. You submit your applications on a submittal date. You don't submit your applications on any day you want. If you want to submit your application on Tuesday, the application's submittal date is Friday, that's great, you can submit it, no problem. On Friday, we will, we will start the review process on it, okay? So we are, and this is not crazy talking, this is how governments do this. We don't just, oh my gosh, here's Chad's application, let me just drop everything and go review Chad's application. It doesn't work like that. Application's the middle day, submit the applications, you start the review process, you move through in a unit, everybody else, treat everybody the same. You guys have some stellar turnaround times, which is fantastic and totally awesome. Your staff is overworked, you don't have any staff and they don't have time to complete the reviews because your turnaround times are too short. You have got to change that and make this more realistic, more reasonable and recognize that you've got three people, so.
And our guys would determine that, that date?
We, there is, a, a schedule should be adopted at the first of the year. These are the meeting days that we're gonna have, these are the application's submittal days that we're gonna have, just like every other body that you've already got.
And it would go along with the budget, so that would be included in your budget, would be that application and meeting timeline for the year for the T R C. So that would go through every spring, you know.
What are we reviewing?
Site plans, some major, like, when I say site plan, I'm talking commercial, not sketch plans, for like, so, site plans for commercial, major subdivision plans. So like, maybe like bars, we're talking stuff that has to go to TRC. Smaller things like, like a shed doesn't have to go to TRC. Um, just things that are new commercial and major subdivisions.
And so, say they are meeting twice a month, and you have to skip, if you miss that Friday, you gotta move to the next.
That's correct.
That's right.
But you still, say if I'm here on Wednesday, I'm giving the documents and then.
Yeah.
It's just better for the.
You're in a combat, or anything like that, it's just.
So by that Friday, not, if you got it there early, it's out of your system?
The deadline will be a Friday to bring in, like you said, on Monday, of course we'll get it. We're not gonna say come back on Friday, you know, that they, we would take it right then, we'll say, we'll give you the name of that meeting, you know.
Just not the Monday, just not the Monday after. That's right. If the deadline's Friday, and you come in the following Monday, you're on the next run.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was saying, still, it's gonna take it, and you just get in the queue.
Right, exactly. Uh, we're also suggesting the, the voluntary expedited review process, so some local governments, um, right, if you're, if you'd like to pay to, to assist the town in bringing an additional review body on board to assist, there's an option for you to do that. Um, and so, this won't be in the UDO, this is more of a policy matter, but there, we are anticipating an expedited review process in case somebody would like to have that.
If y'all would like to do that, would you recommend a fee for it?
Oh, yes.
Most towns, most towns.
Sure.
Yes.
Uh, so if someone is requesting expedited review, they pay the fee, and then we.
The state has it, but please note, the state utilizes that to hire new staff. So for example, if you want a road control permit in three days, you can get that, but it's a two, it's a $250 penalty per acre for that review, because they realize you're allocating, you're requesting more staffing to do that. Uh, so it's a hefty, please don't say, yeah, for $50, we'll do this. That's not the way this should work. That kind of funding is generally set aside for additional staff that would be dedicated to that review process. So there's a fee fee as well.
So you, you need a.
You're saying a third party is what?
Yes, it is, it would be a third party.
In some way, if you're contracted with the engineering to review the jobs, you know, where the fee is, that's what the fee is, I say, local.
Right, exactly, exactly. The fee plus an administrative charge, because this has to be managed.
Very quick.
Right.
But who are we gonna hire? I'm just curious.
Again, the state, through those fees hires additional personnel that are dedicated for those permits.
Correct, and just, who would that personnel be?
Great question.
Okay.
I don't see any engineer.
No volunteers?
Well, that's what I'm saying, you'd have, you could potentially enter into agreement, if you've done it, like with the engineers that were voted on, you know, that, you could go down a list and have four, and say, who's got time to review this? What's the fee? Then you'd have to give back with the fee, if you already have a set fee for the four.
You should set a fee.
Potentially, you know.
And, and the fee's gonna be high.
Yeah.
It's gonna be high, right? That billable rate's gonna probably be well in, in, in excess of what they normally charge, because you're asking them to set down their work that they're working on, and come over and help you, and that is premium.
It might cost four, five, six thousand dollars.
Yes, that's not an uncommon fee. Not at all.
And we can talk about that more, thankfully, that doesn't go in the UDO, so we want to add that, we'll, we'll talk about that later.
Okay. So, but we're comfortable on this idea of a more formal TRC and. Jason, I'm gonna let you talk more about this than I will, because I think there's some, there's some subtlety here about y'all's process that I don't understand as well.
So as a result of the, so in the UDO, so in the process of section in chapter two, um, there are some new processes that are created, new titles of new technical permits, there aren't really creating many things that we don't do now, just kind of dipping things out, so like, one example is that instead of just having a zoning compliance permit, we're gonna have a temporary use permit, for temporary uses. Temporary uses would be cheaper, you wouldn't pay as much for a temporary use as you would a full-on permit, zoning permit. Right now, we charge 50 for a zoning compliance permit, we would propose a price of like 25-ish for, for a temporary use, but that would have to be added to the fee schedule, so what you can look out for is that, and the next budget year, we'll need to look at, or a year before then, probably, as soon as, depending on when the UDO is gonna go into effect, making some changes to the fee schedule.
What would be an example that some of the, purchase a temporary use permit?
Temporary use permit would be for like the.
Set up or something?
Yes, and things like that, uh.
A pod, a storage.
Storage unit, storage pod's a good example, like, uh, if you wanna have like a storage uh, chimney container at your house while you're moving.
Right.
We're requiring.
Or you're a target, and it's Christmas time, and you're gonna have it for three months.
Or label it.
Right, there's gonna be a fee for that, there's a permit review and a fee.
Yeah.
So if I was moving or whatever, or remodeling my home, and I'm gonna get a pod brought into my yard to remodel, and put furniture in to clear out a room, I would have to pay you to put that pod on my property to store my furniture in temporarily?
They just need a temporary permit, and that, that says that, you know, it can be there for up to, I think, 90 days or so.
Right.
90 days, this is a temporary use, it's not meant, it's not meant to be there permanently for, for permanent storage.
Right.
You know, when people are renting these, for example, that, that's not there for, for, uh, it's there for temporary anyways, I wouldn't agree with the charging man that's remodeling his house to pay us to park a pod in his yard or driveway while the remodelers is home, has to get some furniture down on the table, beds out of his way, I wouldn't agree with that.
But we have had citizens complaining, and they stay there for so long.
Right.
That's why we have to do that.
And we have gotten complaints about storage containers, people's yards and stuff, so that.
Twenty, twenty-five dollars probably.
Twenty-five. Yeah, just that. It's the purpose of separating it from, because right now, we just do it all under the zone permit, all under one, but then about separating as a temporary use permit, and charge less for it.
Could you not have something in your ordinances that states what's temporary and what's not temporary, and if you get a complaint on that, on that, then you would, uh, you would enforce that just like you would any other code issue with penalties, versus if I know that I'm gonna remodel my house, and I come up here, and I'm gonna just pay you $25 so I can be in compliance with you, you collect $25 to allow me to put a pod on my driveway while I remodel my home? There's ways to enforce these items set here, as we already do, pods as an example, without providing one more obstacle of red tape or one, you know, for someone to seek permission to remodel their home and store their furniture outside temporarily. Now, if you put that pod outside, and in six months, it's grass growing up all around it, and it's a disaster, you know, enforce it by whatever codes that allow you in terms of, if I would utilize code enforcement. I, I, I wouldn't agree with that portion, I don't say I don't agree with the other stuff, I don't know enough about it, but my suggestion, I would want that removed, for me to agree with that.
Do we currently charge for pods?
For storage units, we have required some for temporary storage use.
Do we, and it was 25, I'm pretty sure, because when I got mine, it was.
That's what I thought, so we currently do charge?
For temporary storage use, because it's a temporary use.
That's what I thought, and then, um, my other question is, is there a timeframe on it, like, is it for 30?
90 days.
So we've got that.
If you need temporary use, in our current world, I'm talking about the current, not just current one and the proposed one, 90 days is your standard temporary use.
So, also, you were, you said you want to hand this to us because they're the thing that you didn't quite understand or something?
Right, I don't know, I don't know the mechanics of, of y'all's fee schedule and how that, how you, how, what you charge for.
I don't.
Uh, but we would, so there's, there's 35, 36 different procedural types in this document, you'll need a fee for each and every one of them, not because we're trying to take money out of somebody's pocket, though, because there's some responsibility that you guys have to, you know, work on. Um, there's, there's, your time is being used to process the application, not because we're trying to single somebody out, but because we're trying to protect their neighbors from having to look at a pod that's been there for more than 90 days, trying to make sure.
That's why you require a permit.
I, I see this, just like the, the inoperable vehicles. I mean, we're taking care of that situation, so that the neighbors are satisfied and, and happy.
Right.
If we, if we allow people to, to just put pods out, there might be pods all over the city.
Right.
And then we gotta wait until we get a complaint before we make a move on it, we're just gonna have people upset.
Right.
And mad, so it's, it's better to have a fee so that we can regulate what the pods are.
Well, here's an issue, let's say if I'm remodeling my house, it doesn't require, it may not require me to have a building permit anyway, so what if I don't exceed that $40,000 threshold, and I'm putting new siding, and windows on, and new carpet, and ceramic tile down, and whatnot, I'm not even coming here to see you, and if you're hiring a contractor, most contractors are gonna know that, and they're not gonna come here, homeowner's gonna call and say, okay, let's clear this section of the house out, let's put this pod in here so that we can, we can house these items, you know, there, there's a limit to, to overcharging things and overstepping our boundaries as government, and, and also maintaining a standard here as well, and if someone puts a pod in, then we have code enforcement to address that, and also, we don't have to be a reactive code enforcement of, you, you know, we don't have to operate under the, under the guidelines, is that we have policies that, and, and until we get a complaint, we don't address that, but if our code officer's riding by, or someone sees it, they, they can file that and say, okay, hey, this pod's been sitting here for six months, now it's grass grown up all around it, you know, uh, and so therefore, you don't have that issue.
And one reason why we require the permits to track the time, how long it's there? It's because.
You got 90 days.
You got 90 days from the time.
I understand that, but we have enough stuff that we already have to deal with, and we don't have to control every aspect of someone's life either, of what they're doing on their own private property. You know, you have to draw a line somewhere, and, you know, putting a pod to remodel, not the same as having a bunch of broken down cars down in the driveway.
Well, I think that it's, um, I didn't mind paying it, because I knew that what I put in there was gonna stay, wasn't gonna be random, you know, and everything like that, but I think that if somebody is, is doing, doing remodeling or whatever, for whatever reason they need that pod, they have determined that whatever is in it, that they need to protect it, and I think that they would be, I wasn't.
And they'd be grateful to come pay us $25 for us to let them use it?
I was, and I could plus what I had to pay for the pod, so.
So how, how would you enforce it? If, if I come up here and I pay you $25 for them doing some work, or whatever, and have one in the driveway, and then it's good, you're only gonna do it for three months, and then I realize I need to go a little bit longer, am I paying another $25 for it? Or is it, is it less, or maybe between 10 inches?
Typically, there's so many times in a year, you can get a temporary use permit for the same thing, so like, if you're getting, that's how I've seen it, yeah.
Yeah, that's accurate.
If you see it done that way, typically, it would be like, so many times in a year, like, three times a year, you can have, if you want to.
But if you, if you're under that one permit, could, could we put something in there if it needs to be extended, maybe for just an additional month? Do you need to get, pay another $25 for another permit, or can we just operate off of that first one and just charge for an extension now off that?
Every 90 days, you're gonna require them to pay you additional $25, you know, for that permit.
But if that first, I don't need another two 90 days, I'm just saying.
Well, that's up to, it's up to one day to 90 days, and then after 90 days, you.
You gotta get another one.
You, you, you make that quest up to three times, is what he's saying.
Ease back, then, ease back. Right now, as drafted, it's 90 days per lock per calendar year, that's it. It's not, I come in and I have a pod here for 90 days, and then I come back and get another permit, and I keep the pod here for another 90 days, and I come back and I keep the pod for another 90 days. Now, it may be that that's how you want this to be, and that's fine, but that's not how it's drafted right now. Um, it's drafted right now to say, 90 days per lock per calendar year. That's it. Um, and so, you know, that, that may not be enough time, it may be enough time, that's, you know, for, for y'all to, to contemplate, think about, um, we can organize this to allow multiple times per year, for example, if you're doing an outdoor seasonal sale, um, you're a business and you wanna sell pumpkins, or Christmas trees, or mums, you get three times a year, uh, 45 days each to have an outdoor sale, okay? Now, as drafted, the portable storage container is 90 days per lock per calendar year, with one duration, one opportunity over the course of the calendar year. If you'd like to have more, no problem, that's a decision for you guys to make. Every time you do that, though, you're, you know, yes, it's another 25 bucks, it's more time and paper in your hands, and it's more trouble for your enforcement person to go back and be like, okay, is this the second renewal, or the third, or whatever, so there's a little bit more effort that goes into that, and so you balance that out.
So let's say I'm remodeling food line down here, and this is the way that this works, and I have a pod delivered down there with my electrical supplies in it.
Mm-hmm.
I've gotta come pay you to park my pod there to store my tools in during the food line reup, correct?
Unless your tool, unless the pod's inside the building.
That's right.
But we're currently doing that.
Yes.
That's what I just wanna make clear to council, like, this is where, if it's what you don't wanna do, this is, we are currently doing what they're saying, I mean, this isn't changing anything, we are currently doing this.
I, I just don't see words advantageous to the customer, to the citizen, in any way, you know, you.
What about the neighbors?
If it's an issue, so how does me paying $25 for a pod benefit my neighbor?
I mean, I'm saying what it, what it looks like in the neighborhood.
Well, I understand, that's why you'd have code enforcement, so if something, you can have a policy written that says, you know, just like, if you wanna refer back to the vehicles, you can have a policy written that says, if this pod's been sitting here, and what could, could potentially be deemed a permanent fixture, and you're not maintaining it, what about people who, who remodel a house, let's use yours for an example, how long have you been remodeling your house? Because, you know what I'm saying, it could spill well over 90 days.
So one, one thing also to keep in mind is that, the initial time that code enforcement goes out, they're documenting that as the first visit, we don't know how long it's been there. The, the owner, the next door neighbor may say, oh, it's been there forever, we don't know that. So they will go out there with documents, delaying enforcement, because you don't know when it was put there. So you know, you go out and see it, that's the first time, so they could, let's say they, we do require a permit, then it goes 90 days, we track that 90 days until then. If we don't, if we don't, then they have to go out there, see it, and then wait three months, and then go back, oh, it's still there, and then they say, well, no, I took it away, and then I'm moving back. Okay, well, we start, we start the 90 day clock, and you're constantly.
But Jason, your biggest question you're just asking is, do we want to continue with that fee of $25?
So these, to make permitting more closer to self-loathing, because it costs time and money to have a code enforcement officer continually get out there to say, hey, is the storage unit still out there? It's gas, it's time.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with it, but my question was, if somebody comes to you and gets that permit, and they're doing something with their hands, and get that pod there with all the equipment, tools that do have a contractor doing it, and then coming up close to the end of that 30 days while they're doing that to remodel whatever, they realize, found out, oh, you got some foundation issues that we gotta do now, so what happens when you're on that 87th day?
You want to do more prevention.
And you're.
But then they have to come back up here and pay you another $25.
Well, I ain't worth nothing, I mean, that's just what you gotta deal with. So that's, that's kinda where I'm at.
And we can do something like that.
Yeah.
And I think most people that use the pods for legitimate reasons, they're not going to have a problem.
And we have people, several people ask, and I've never had a problem with, with dealing with interior storage as far as people having it or something like that. That was, that was an example, but.
So you've got two more. Let's just try, let's just try to knock it out and talk.
Okay. Um, this is not, this is not a shattering issue, but it's one that the planning board is not happy about. And here it is. We made a decision to join the planning board and the board of adjustment. Planning board is the board of adjustment. In North Carolina, a board of adjustment has a term limit. Planning board members are not term limited. Board of adjustment members are two terms, three years each. That's it. And that's set down by state law. That means we have to, if we're going to have a joined planning board, board of adjustment, planning board now will have term limits. Two terms, three years each. And how, you know, whether or not you can be reappointed is a policy matter for you guys to consider. As long as you come off the board, you could come back on when it suits you or how your policy is written. You're still okay under the law, but you can't have somebody serving, you know, eighteen years or thirty years. The statutes are very clear. Up to two terms of three years each.
I just want to clarify, because currently, it's only, they can only sort two terms and then they offer.
Two five years.
Yes, two five years, right. And that, obviously, we can't do that because that exceeds state law. So we have to go with the three. They weren't happy, but there's just not much we can do about it.
Yes, for life is what it is.
Right. Okay, okay. Last question.
And will that be retroactive or will we still fight?
It's in place now. They shouldn't be, you know, anybody who's been in the, in the seat for longer than six years, guys need to, you're out of compliance.
Well, really, based off this, it needs to be three right now, correct?
Uh, two, three year terms.
Two, three, six years.
Yeah, six years.
So they can serve two, three years consecutively?
Yeah.
Yes, a back-to-back. Yes, yes. And then you stop and then you start again. And you guys can set some policy about how long you stop for and all of that. That's fine. But you just need to be able to show, nobody's been seated actively, you know, for longer than six years. Okay? Okay. Last question. Is this comprehensive citywide rezoning? Do you want to go there? I had said earlier that we've tried to structure this ordinance to minimize the need to do this. That said, we are talking about a new downtown periphery district, taking your current CB, you know, central business district. Splitting it in two, recognizing a core and recognizing a periphery, because they have different characters, different building sizes, et cetera. One could argue that that triggers the need to do a rezoning for that area. Now, if one agrees with that theory, then, you know, and wishes to move forward with the downtown periphery rezoning. That opens the opportunity for you to address some other challenges or issues, things that have mistakes, which you have, you know. I know you do, because everybody does. Or maybe there's some other rezonings that you'd like to have, like maybe depot district.
Yes, that was what me and Montana had talked about. And we both came to the same conclusion. We wanted to bring this back up to y'all, because the last work session we brought it up. And the feedback we got was to just rezone as, as the people come in to the depot district to, to just general business or what we're converting to, which is a median minutes. So the way that we're proposing this in the code, so, so in the depot district plan, it calls for townhomes, like urban style townhomes and things. So if we want to go there, those will only be a limited conditional zoning district. Also, the depot district plan, as it's written currently, unless we do some amendments to it, and I know y'all need to read through it, and we need to show up to you and everything, we're working on that. I thought some were thinking we're going to bring it up at a later date.
Has this been adopted already?
No, it has not been adopted. It has not been adopted. It has not been adopted.
We just talked.
Yes, we're just talking about it. So if you want to make it a planned district, where the depot district plan, which it has some regulatory elements into it, which we can talk about. And see what you feel about. If you want to go that route, we need to make it a conditional zoning district. To have that planned control and have the standards specific to that zoning district. To have development come out the way that is similar to where it is in the plan. I mean, as long as it's all a regulatory plan, obviously the maps and things showing this going here and there and there would not control. It would just be the regulatory standards of how buildings orient. It would not be how, you know, the design, it's more design standards are in that. And I think the original intent at the time from previous administration was to use form-based code to control how the buildings look. And we can do things like that, not necessarily to that extent, more so in our current style of ordinance, which is not form-based. But we can do that, but.
I want to talk about one other smaller example, but, but important. Last night, we talked about the youth development center, okay? And the youth development center is permitted in the heavy industrial district. Y'all's industrial districts are off kilter, and we should probably adjust that. So that the heavy industrial district is not just for the youth development center, which I think is the only youth that's in that district right now. And consider the possibility of rezoning that site to the public district that we're creating. Which would free us up to bring our industrial districts back into alignment, so that heavy industrial is for heavy industrial. So there's a real world example of why it might be worth it to consider, you know, instead of just a translation, you know, actually fixing some of the, you know, where things don't quite fit like they should.
And like with the downtown periphery district, if we want to go with that, so that would be established if that district doesn't exist. So we, you know, wouldn't be able to translate CB into DTC and DCP. So you would do a rezoning, which would show this is where the core is, the downtown core, which is probably going to be on South Street, Gilner, Settle, so forth. Versus the periphery, which is going to be on Main Street going around. The stuff that we can identify that's not like the core, it's a little bit different, but it's still downtown. So we can talk about that later on, what we consider the periphery and everything, but that goes along with something else we can do with this comprehensive.
I think we really, in terms of this, I don't disagree with this, and then we really need to look at the feasibility of the depot district and the, and the. And actually fruition and then coming to life before we go placing, you know, zoning parameters and restrictions on there. If we get someone who's willing to come in there and start cleaning that area up and making it look a lot better than what it is, you know. I've said this before, I just don't see, if we're ever to have a depot district, in my opinion, it'd be fifteen, twenty years down the road. We still got a lot of development. And a lot of cleanup to do as a city as a whole. And the last point, the investor's not going to jump back there behind the railway tracks first and start working before we work elsewhere. So if we get someone who's willing to go back there and work and do anything with that area and invest because it may fit a specific feasible application that they have. The last thing that I would want to do is have a specific zone in there to keep them away from wanting to invest and clean that area up.
Keep, keep in mind, somebody's already started.
Started what?
Uh, we're going to have, what's on these? They've already started.
Also, outside of the depot district, this allows us to be more intentional with long-term planning, the planning future quote. Instead of when a developer comes and they're like, oh, man, I want to build this here, and it's not necessarily zoned there. We can kind of be ahead of the curve and expect what's going to come there with that rezoning. Instead of them then coming through and delaying their development process because they're going to have to go through a rezoning later, we can anticipate it on early.
What I would say was, is such that we're not binding them down to the, the concept of the depot district is what I would say, is what I mean by, you understand what I'm saying? Like, it sounds like if we rezoned this area, you're forced to disresort, and I couldn't be misunderstanding that. It's saying, okay, this area is designated for the depot district and you can only do X, Y, Z here. Because this is the picture that we want to look right here.
So you can have, with a conditional district, you can limit the uses that, you know, the planning calls for. Restaurants, retail, multifamily housing, all, everything that is envisioned in the planning. So also, and the more you can make development predictable, the more likely you can snag a big developer. Because the last thing a lot of them, they want to see is uncertainty. They don't know how the rezoning's going to play out. You know, that they may come in and it gets denied. The more you can create certainty and predictability in the entitlement process, the more likely you're going to get a bigger developer to go through it because of there's some uncertainty. And they think, oh, I might be wrapped up in this for, you know, six months, a year. It happens in places. I've seen it happen in other cities where they're tied up in a conditional zoning negotiation for a long time.
I was just asking what the terms of that depot area zone would be, and we, the terms of that, we're saying, here's a picture, and this is what we envisioned that y'all had. And this is what we're going to do with nothing else. It shows a beer garden here.
No, no, no. So the map, we're not controlled. So all we control is the uses that are allowed in the district. So we would limit uses to what's allowed in the plan, instead of just generally us thinking what you're going to do. We've limited to what uses you are planning for.
It's not controlling that specific design.
No, not the lots. No, no. The, the plan will show the maps that will show a beer garden here, a parking lot here, and it may not develop that.
That's a conception. That's why I was asking.
And it doesn't require like nothing, but a restaurant can go on that lot, you know. That's not what it's saying. It's saying that in the district, there's going to be a lot of uses. This is the concept.
Gotcha. Okay, it also offers the opportunity for the businesses that are there. Because if somebody wants to come in and have a big recreation area and a restaurant, I'd be willing to sell if it was zoned that way.
And the regulatory plan is very short. There's about ten things. It's mainly how those streets orient, but there's a lot of stuff that's in there as well as far as like utilities being relocated underground. There are implementation steps on the cities that we need to talk about as well.
Correct.
But, yeah, this will be one thing that we would look at with this, or some other things.
I think it would give us a better opportunity to actually have a depot district.
Yeah, that's a great segment.
We're good. That's, that's it. I showed you this slide before. This gives you a thumbnail sketch of kind of where we are right now and where we would expect to be going. We, you know, I, I think certainly whatever has been drafted, you know, is available. If it's not, let me know. I'll send it to you. And we're going to be wrapping up the balance of the chapters the rest of this week. And we, we would expect to start the adoption process formally on December eighteenth and be completed with that around about the eleventh of February. That is our hope. If we need more time, absolutely willing to do that. If it needs to go faster and you guys want to schedule some special meetings, that's okay. We do have some public hearing notice requirements that we need to deal with.
So I guess that would be my question to mayor and council. Do you feel like, looking at that timetable right there, the next time this would come to you, if I'm looking at this correctly, would be you would have a hearing on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five? Do you feel like, based on your discussions today, you would like another work session prior to that to have a chance to review? Now that Chad's got some direction, a little bit more clarification on what you're looking at, do you want another work session before you're hit with a public hearing?
Will we get this to read at our own recognizance or our own time prior to that one fourteenth session?
You would, but I'm just asking, do you, do you feel like you're going to have more questions? And I know that's kind of a loaded answer, or a loaded question I'm asking you. Do you feel like, are you comfortable getting all this information and then not being able to talk about it until that first public hearing? Or do you feel like you need another meeting to let you talk as a group in a, in a special call meeting before you get hit with that first public hearing?
I think we need a call meeting.
We have tonight, I think.
I think.
Did that help? Kind of?
Sure.
Okay.
So we can set that up for some time, December, December, as we're doing the next hearing, coming in before Thanksgiving. So I guess we all want people to go to Thanksgiving, so we can look at our early December before Christmas.
I'd suggest early December.
So we get the planning board consideration, has it on twelve eighteen? So I'm assuming, will this document be provided to them before twelve eighteen?
Yeah, they've, they've been reviewing the same.
Hardly been on the wall.
Clear your steering.
But they, they will have the complete doc, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
When would you anticipate that we would have this complete document prior review?
Uh, well, that's going to depend, so I'm suggesting that the post-adoption version of the UDO in its entirety be made available on December second. It'd be miles if you got that before December second. But that's going to depend a little bit on staff review and, and the level of revision.
So let me just throw this out. Would it, it sounds like this is something we all want to get right. Would you feel more comfortable pushing that out to where maybe you had staff reviews that gets this on twelve-two, we can send it to you? Because I'm sure staff, we're going to have questions of Chad, and then we set your work, your next work session like in January. I mean, I guess that's where I'm trying to go, like, is there a desire for council to hold to that two seventeen date? I mean, we're not on a time crunch. Are you okay? Because I do feel like the holidays are going to get everybody in a crunch, and staff's not going to get everything to two, to twelve-two. And we're probably going to have a lot of questions with Chad. Would it make more sense for you all to have a call meeting in January?
I don't, I don't. I don't do the rush, I don't have to be able to.
That's why I'm asking if there's, and that's what I think Chad was saying. He's got more time. It's kind of the will of the board.
And even maybe potentially as we review this, you have the ability to set up some two-on-twos if we see some problems we can bring to you. Or if we don't, you know, then you could have a consensus to go back to him if need be to make some changes for the next hearing. And that way, it's just kind of review these changes that have been made, maybe that's died of the process, you know, you have to call the judgment, you know, rush the judgment.
So a meeting like between January first and January fourteenth? I mean, is that what you were thinking?
That's what I was thinking. Or it could be.
So can our fourteenth council hearing be for this? You know, like what we're doing now?
No, that should be a regular scheduled meeting. I would suggest you just do it sometime in January. You just push everything out of month.
Right, yeah.
That was where I was going.
This will need to go to planning board before you, and then there'll have to be an ad that has to run between ten, twenty-three days, in the newspaper twice. Before you guys have your first hearing, before you have your first read of it.
So why don't we do this? Chad, why don't you and Jason maybe connect offline after this meeting and you can include me and some emails? Why don't you look at your schedule in January and see when you could come back in January and do a follow-up meeting?
Yep.
Based on what we've had here today. That way, council's had everything when you get the review of this.
Right, you guys will have had it for over a month.
I think you should have a month. I think that'd be perfect.
I, sure, absolutely. I will tell you, I don't know how much, how often you guys sit down and read development codes. It's not a lot of fun. I, over the arc of my career, have, have kind of moved away from giving people a lot of time because I know that they don't read it. Because you get it and it's like, I read a page, okay, I'm done. So, but I'm absolutely fine giving you guys, you know, as long as you need, as long as you want. And we should do like a little, like a poll or something, or, you know, some kind of lottery to see who actually reads the document. Because that'll be interesting. It's a very interesting tell, because I know there's always people like, I got to read it, I got to read it, and they get it. And it's like, I read it, and that's the.
Very team, y'all read it.
Fantastic, fantastic. I'm sure, I'm sure. And it will be the better for it. So that sounds great. We'll, we'll come up with time. And, you know, we can kind of work our way through how you guys want to go through the adoption process at that point. But I agree with you. There's no reason to rush this. It's absolutely important that you take your time and that you're comfortable with it.
That's why I was asking, because it will, it'll probably take thirty days to read this in your spare time, like email, to get an understanding of this.
And we can just highlight any questions we have?
Yes, ma'am. You can do, you can do whatever you like. You can highlight, you can send emails, you can, you know, whatever's comfortable. You can write on it, whatever, whatever works for you. And we'll reconvene, and, and we can either do an overview or we can just jump right into questions. And we can talk about how that, how our next meeting is structured for efficiency purposes.
Sounds good.
Anyone else have any questions? All, all hearts and minds clear.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Got a motion?
Certainly.
Got a second and a discussion? Raise your right hand if you agree.
You agree, partner?